Good afternoon. I want to welcome everybody to the House Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection, calling our meeting to order. Today is Thursday, February 20th. The time is approximately 1:00 p.m. Please note that the Spanish interpreters in the back corner of the room are making this meeting accessible to Spanish speakers. Live Spanish interpretation is available via the Listen Wi-Fi Smartphone app or listening devices available at the visitor service desk. We have Rep. Kate excused today. Rep. Wallen is also excused. She'll be joining us a bit later. And colleagues, we are going to be beginning today with informational meeting, hearing from the Oregon Public Utility Commission on the rate-setting process. After that, we are going to pivot to the public hearing on House Bill 3179. We have a number of people signed up to testify, so without further ado, going to open the informational meeting and going to invite Nolan Moser to come forward and provide some information about the PUC.
All right. Good afternoon, and thank you very much, Chair Sosa, Vice Chair Chai Chi, and Vice Chair Osborne. For the record, my name is Nolan Moser. I am the Executive Director of the Oregon Public Utility Commission. And I understand we have about 10 minutes today, so I will work to get through these slides efficiently. All right. So we're going to talk a bit about the background on our agency, the types of dockets and matters we review. We'll review the basics of utility ratemaking, including kind of our legal standards as well as the various roles of staff and stakeholders. And then I'll review some bill and rate trends that we've noticed in the last few years. So first, a little background on our agency. We are the economic regulator of all investor-owned utilities in the state of Oregon for the electric sector. That includes Portland General Electric, Pacific Corps, and Idaho Power. For natural gas, that is Northwest Natural, Cascade, and Avista. We also regulate small telecom and water companies as well and do rate regulation for those water companies, similar to the rate regulation that we do for electric and natural gas companies. So before those companies make any changes to their tariffed rates, we must review and our commission must approve those changes. We have quasi-judicial and policy functions, meaning that we act as a court. Our commissioners act as judges in certain matters and essentially as policymakers through rulemakings and other matters under delegated authority for other issues. We have three full-time commissioners, and we've got 142 full-time employees. Our mission, you can see it there, is to ensure that Oregonians have access to safe, reliable, and fairly priced utility services, but also that we implement state policy and promote the public interest. And in our view, that includes ensuring that we focus on affordability. Process is very important to our agency. I'll talk a bit about that later and how we've worked really hard, and I individually have a strong interest in opening our process to make sure that it's accessible to all. So these are the type of dockets that we typically engage in, and I think they kind of break out into three broad categories. Rates, what we're here to talk about today, we do this through, we manage rates through general rate cases primarily, and then other annual adjustment cases. Planning, this is where a lot of policy gets addressed. Specific goals that you all set in the legislature get delegated to us, and we address mainly through planning. And there you'll see integrated resource planning, clean energy planning. We do a tremendous amount of work around wildfire mitigation and safety, as well as distribution system planning. And then we also oversee the administration of utility programs. A few examples there, the community solar program that's in law. We oversee the operations of the Energy Trust of Oregon, who offers energy efficiency programs across our state. We also handle demand response, perp implementation, and things like transportation electrification. One thing I'll note for these areas is we've had some organizational changes. I'm a relatively new executive director. I came into the position on an interim basis in June and then was made full-time executive director in November. And we did a reorganization in our agency. The purpose of that reorganization was really to center the customer experience and affordability more in our staff work in a couple different ways. So prior, we had an organization where our planning and policy work was separated from our rates work, and they reported to individuals that reported to the executive director. Now, all that planning and rates work goes through the same individual, one strategic leader that's responsible for ensuring that when we do policy work, we think about the rate impact of that policy. When we do rate work with our utilities, it's where we have the most leverage over them. We're working hard to make sure that they are complying with Oregon's goals and our policy objectives. I've also ensured that we have really strong management of those teams so that these objectives can be pursued. And I think, I hope, that that's been reflected in recent actions, in particular our staff's activity and really thoroughness in our recent rate cases. We had four contested case rate cases last year, quite a bit for our agency. Quick background on our authority. And I know this is a subject of the bill, so I'll highlight it. We set rates by closely scrutinizing the reasonable cost to serve customers, including achieving safety, reliability, and policy requirements. So the job of our staff is to scrutinize those filings, those costs that utilities put forward, make sure they're justified before they're put into rates. Ultimately, rates must be reasonable and just and must provide the opportunity for recovery of prudent capital investments. And I'll note that one of the things that we strive to achieve, and it's very important to keep in mind in this context and in this discussion today, is that we need our utilities to make the investments, to do the work, to provide that service. And part of our job is to ensure that they are capable of doing that while also protecting the consumer. Consumer protection is, of course, our core concern, and that includes affordability, safety, and reliability. Again, our general power statute, you'll hear more about this today, and I know that you're all very familiar with it. So let's get into how we do ratemaking. Rates are really, consist of two components, and they're set in two different ways. For most of the utilities' operations, those costs are determined and set in a general rate case. This is a big contested case. It's a judicial proceeding, and in that proceeding, we review labor, materials, capital costs, really everything that the utility spends to provide service to customers. We ultimately determine an overall revenue requirement and rate of return for the utility in that process, and our commission rules on that. And it's important to note that the utilities control when they come in and ask for that review. So as I mentioned earlier, we had four of those cases really ongoing throughout last year, which, in memory of anyone who's worked at the PUC, was unprecedented. We also have annual cost adjustments for some non-capital costs, and it's important to distinguish these because there's generally no profit markup in those costs. These costs typically reflect actual prices paid by the utility, typically for energy supply, and these are typically also highly variable costs. So we'll talk about process here for a moment. Our rate cases are typically contested cases. These are quasi-judicial cases. We assign judges, administrative law judges, to each case, and we have specific requirements around due process that we must follow. And our decisions here must be based on the evidentiary record. This is important to emphasize. Our commission must follow the facts. So the presentation of evidence from the utility, that's how we start, and then our stakeholders, a lot of the folks in this room, get engaged in the process and make sure that those facts are accurate, they bring their own facts and arguments to the table, and the commission must ultimately make a decision based on all that information. I'll go through some of the steps of our contested case process here. We start with a pre-hearing conference. This is where we set the schedule, we identify the parties to the case, we hear testimony, and that testimony is typically written. We have a public comment hearing. And here, I'll note that we've taken some important steps to expand the reach of the agency. We do a tremendous amount of media work now to get the word out about our public comment hearings so we can hear from the public on rate issues, and we also offer Spanish translation for every major rate case. We have a hearing. This is where lawyers, the ALJ, and commissioners question witnesses. Typically, you need an attorney to participate in that step. Following that, we have a briefing process. This is where written argument is provided by each of the parties. We have an oral argument where lawyers get in front of the commission and make legal argument. And then ultimately, we have a final decision where the commission reviews and weighs all the evidence and issues of written decision. I will say that these can be very intense processes. We just had, as I mentioned, those four rate cases, two of them had orders of 120 pages. There were no issues settled in those cases. The commission had to wade through every single contested issue. This is just a summary of sort of how the process flows and where public comment can be submitted. Here, I'll also note some other things that we've done recently to try to expand access to our process. We understand it's a very difficult process, not intuitive, not easy for groups to participate in. So those public comments, as I mentioned, we now do translation for those. We do multiple typically public comments hearings for our larger cases. And then we will also do them in-person occasionally when that's more appropriate. For example, for Idaho Power, last year, we did an in-person hearing in eastern Oregon to ensure that folks in that service territory could participate. A little more about our staff. So our staff, really the engine of our agency, about 50 folks, they are accountants, financial analysts, economists, engineers, and their job is to scrutinize. Their job is to review, to dig into that utility filing and ensure that the costs presented are justified. They are paired with attorneys from DOJ. We rely heavily on DOJ for legal review of our cases, and we have some really excellent DOJ attorneys who are also experts in their field. So they're analyzing utility filings, they're requesting more information, they submit testimony, they issue data requests to our utilities, and then they develop settlement positions and they work with other parties. And I think here it's important to note that we, our staff, and I encourage this very strongly, our staff works very closely with a CUB, stakeholders. They are important partners in the development of staff positions. So I'll finish up with some discussion of recent cases and results. As you can see here, we've had quite a bit of rate activity over the last few years. Just focusing on last year, you'll see we had those cases from Idaho Power, Northwest Natural, Pacific Corps, and PGE. And I think it's important to note that it really doesn't happen that a utility comes in and gets the request that they have asked for. There is always some attrition as part of that staff and stakeholder review. There are savings that are identified, there are issues, and the commission issues its decision. Typically, it's less than what the utility asks for. I'm going to talk a bit about the reasons for recent rate increases. Certainly, general inflation. Really, since the pandemic, there's been extraordinary competition for resources across the country and really the world as electricity growth has increased, and that labor, that equipment, is more expensive. We have increased costs of purchasing wholesale electricity and natural gas. So our utilities used to be able to rely on the market to a certain extent for low-cost supply. That's no longer the case. There's very high competition across the West for power right now, and that has increased the cost of power and to a certain extent, natural gas as well. Our system is old. We have a utility system that, at least here in the West in parts, was built 70, 80 years ago. We need to make significant investments in grid infrastructure to maintain safety and improve reliability. We've also had some unfortunate extreme weather in our state recently, and that certainly costs money. Every time that we have an extreme event, it impacts costs here in Oregon. And occasionally, when we have extreme events nationally, it can impact our costs because it can increase the competition for that raw material to replace the lines that have been brought down by a storm, for example. And then finally, we have increased spending on wildfire mitigation, really an important and growing area of spending on behalf of our utilities. Just a quick bill comparison here. You can see sort of how things are broken out and what your bill is typically made of for each of our major electric utilities, for example. And I'll just call your attention to that wildfire sliver that's in yellow. 15 years ago, the spending in that area was next to nothing, and now it's a significant and we anticipate growing part of your utility bill. So I tried to keep things tight, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
We appreciate it. Rep. Reski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being with us today. If you could go back to Slide 14 real quick. Right there, I noticed that all the rates go up except for there was one there where Pacific Corps in 2022, 1.6% negative. And I guess my question is, how does, I'm assuming that the IOUs initiate the rate request change process, and then you work through your process and either change the rate one way or another. How does somebody petition to lower the rate beyond the IOUs? Is there such a process?
Representative Reski, that's a great question. And it is my understanding that our staff can instigate a rate case and has historically done so, particularly where rates have been very stable over a period of years. So we're in a stage today where utilities are needing to come in quite a bit because they argue their costs are increasing, and they want us to review that. There have been other periods in our history where costs have been flat or even going down. And during those periods, the utility is disincentivized to come in for a rate case because if they did, it might demonstrate that actual costs were lower. I don't know the particulars of that proceeding. I don't remember them as more accurate, but that's what happened there in 2021. Essentially, Pacific Corps came in anticipating a need to increase rates by 6%. The staff investigation, party review actually resulted in a decrease in rates.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your presentation. I just have a quick question. So you talked a little bit about grid resilience, and I guess I'd probably more or less refer that as wildfire mitigation. So explain to me, because I don't really understand the process, do the power companies come to you and say, hey, we need to spend 5% on that, on those items? Or do you guys say, hey, you have to spend this much on that? I mean, how does that work, and what is their percentage? Maybe clarify.
Yeah. Vice Chair Osborne, I appreciate that question. I would say that it's a little both, mostly the utilities. The utilities must be proactive about preventing wildfire and hardening their system. They consider that to be a general obligation. However, we've had legislation passed, we have new rules that requires pretty extensive planning, so we are expecting to see them make investments. I think where the real work of our staff comes in is twofold. Number one, ensuring that those plans will result in a safe system and doing that audit. And then, secondly, making sure that that spending is efficient. There's a lot of things you can do to mitigate against wildfire, right? You could underground all your lines. That would be highly expensive for consumers. So we're looking for the strategies that will deliver safety and reliability but also won't cost too much. And that's really the priority of our staff, is building that efficiency into the system.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, I know we have a lot of folks signed up to testify for the next bill, so Ms. Moser, thank you so much.
One question down here. Rep. Wallen.
I'm sorry, Chair Sosa. Thank you so much. I'll be quick.
Sure.
I had a couple of questions. I really appreciate this chart so we can see clearly the rate increases. But I was curious, like, which ratepayers are you hearing from most? What public feedback are you getting on? We hear a lot the news that people are up in arms because of rate increases. Who are you hearing from most, and which sector are they most concerned about?
Representative Walters, I think that, on balance, we probably hear a little more from PGE customers, but there's a reason for that. PGE customers tend to overall have lower bills, meaning that their per-kilowatt-hour costs can be a little higher, but their overall bill tends to be a little lower. They tend to be lower users. So what I think, you know, just my guess is what happens is that the higher users in PGE's service territory are feeling more of an impact, and we're hearing more from them. So we certainly are hearing from everyone, but I would say that we definitely received more of a volume of comments from PGE customers.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you very much, and I'm going to go ahead and close the informational meeting from the PUC, and I'm going to open a public hearing on House Bill 3179.
Awesome. Well, while he moves, Andrew, would you like to tell us about this next bill?
Thank you. House Bill 3179, the measure, let's see, the measure requires the Public Utility Commission to consider the revenue increases from proposed rate increases from public utilities and gives authority in rate setting. It requires visual explanations of costs from electricity and natural gas service providers. It requires quarterly reports on rate adjustments expected in the next 12 months, and it takes effect on the 91st day following adjournment, signee die. There is a dash one posted to OLS. The amendment requires the commission to consider residential rate impacts and a public utilities' return on equity when considering a residential rate increase. In the case of a residential rate increase, the commission will consider economic impacts as provided by the public utility and perform an independent analysis of economic impact. The amendment also restricts when an increase can become effective and allows the commission to extend a suspension and require additional disclosures from public utilities, declares an emergency, and is effective on passage.
Thank you. Representative?
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Chai Chi and Osborne, members of the committee, my name is Nathan Sosa. I am State Representative for District 30. Like many of you, I'm sure, I've heard from my constituents how frustrated they are with the dramatic and repeated increases in their utility bills. The scope of this problem is staggering. Over the past few years, electrical and gas rates from investor-owned utilities have gone up by nearly 50%. Tens of thousands of Oregonians have had their utilities shut off, often in the middle of winter. Many more are struggling to cover the costs of these ever-increasing expenses. This is not sustainable. That is what led me to be a chief sponsor of House Bill 3179, the Fair Energy Act. The bill would reform the rate-setting process in various ways to ensure that the interests of Oregon consumers are prioritized. Among other things, it would, including the dash one, it would give the Public Utility Commission broader discretion in setting rates, including the ability to set the lowest reasonable rate. It would permit the PUC to phase in increases over time to minimize price shocks to consumers. It would limit the utility companies to one general rate increase every 18 months. It would prohibit rate increases from going into effect in the winter months when usage is at its highest. It would require the PUC to take a detailed look at customer data when evaluating a rate increase, including median income, unemployment rate, the number of people receiving social services, and it would create more transparency by requiring the utilities to report expense categories online so that customers know what they're paying for. The subsequent speakers will walk you through each of these proposed reforms in more detail, but colleagues, I just want to say that the current rate-setting process is not working for the vast majority of Oregonians. The Fair Energy Act would reform the process and prevent our constituents from continuing to be hit with repeated and historic utility rate increases. I urge your support. Thank you.
Vice Chair Chai Chi and Vice Chair Osborne and members of the committee, for the record, I'm Janine Solman. I'm the state senator for Senate District 15, representing Forest Grove, Cornelius, Hillsborough, and the Rock Creek area of Washington County. Transparency is largely the theme throughout my points today. I come to you in support of House Bill 3179 and the forthcoming amendments, which empower state regulators to set energy billing rates at the lowest possible level, remove utility increases out of winter months, have more flexibility to use low-cost financing, and will increase transparency so that customers know what they are paying for and what to expect when they see a change in energy bills. Colleagues, rate increases have been a top issue for many of our constituents. As Oregonians strive for fairness and accountability in our state, I come before you in support of House Bill 3179 and thank Representative Sosa and members for their hard work on this. As it mandates greater transparency in utility rate increases and billing practices, our constituents have the right to understand exactly what they're paying for, whether it's the cost of infrastructure maintenance, energy generation, or improvements to service reliability. Oregonians across the state worry about being left in the dark over the rising cost of utility bills. Families are bearing the burden of unpredictable rate hikes, which lately has fell to Oregonians frequently implemented with minimal transparency. This lack of clarity leaves many Oregonians residents frustrated and financially strained as they struggle to understand what they are paying for and how much to put aside each month for their utility bills. We need to ensure that the circumstances of our constituents are centered in these discussions. For these reasons, I urge your support of House Bill 3179 to further this conversation and action for Oregonians that seek the transparent answers they seek and much-needed financial relief in these very tough economic times. Thank you.
Any questions? Rep. Wallen?
Go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Thank you, Chair. Chai Chi, I don't want to beat you up or anything on this, but it's great that you're looking into taking care of Oregonians, making sure the electric bills are lower and gas bills are lower. My concern about this bill, I like the transparency part of it, I'm concerned about the 18 months because, I mean, if a power company comes to you and they've had it, let's just say they've had a major disaster, right? Snowstorm, snowpocalypse, whatever you call it, all of a sudden, they've got, they have a need for 200 power poles, 25 transformers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, or whatever the case may be that made their cost go up. Are they going to be basically stuck for 18 months being able to raise their rates?
Vice Chair Chai Chi, Vice Chair Osborne, thank you for that question. I'm guessing one of the subsequent speakers will address this, but my understanding is that they will have mechanisms to do that through a single-issue rate request as opposed to it. This would be only a general rate increase would be allowed every 18 months, but they would still have flexibility through other means.
Thanks.
Thank you. My only question is, Representative Osborne and I have the joy of also serving on the Climate, Energy, and the Environment Committee, and we hear from the PUC a lot, and we have a lot of PUC bills in that committee. And so I'm just wondering, like, is this bill going to go there, too, for consideration? Are those bills going to come here so that we can make sure that we aren't, like, passing a bunch of siloed bills without looking at the whole?
Sure. Thank you. Vice Chair Chai Chi, Rep. Wallen, so my understanding is in the House, our committee is going to be the one tasked with looking at this bill. When it goes to the Senate, I'm guessing our good senator here will probably be hosting it in her committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair Chai Chi and Rep. Osborne and members of the committee and Rep. Wallen, absolutely. I mean, the action that we take in this building requires us to have good communication. We know on this, and I think Rep. Lively in Energy, in the Climate, Energy and Climate Committee, as well as in the Senate, Energy and Environment, we have been communicating regularly about the types of bills and working with LPRO to make sure. So I will take note of that and make sure, because I think we see this level of bills because we're all hearing the level of frustration from our constituents.
Right.
And I will say on the record, too, that I have had several meetings with Nolan from the PUC, and I am encouraged by the action and the attention that they are taking as they are hearing these complaints and concerns as well.
Rep. Reski.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and Rep. Sosa. Thank you, and good to see you, Senator Solman. It's been a while. So in your testimony, I think I heard you say that there were more amendments coming. Did I hear you correctly or not? And if so, are you willing to give us any light, insight into what those might be?
Vice Chair Chai Chi, Rep. Reski, to my knowledge, only the dash one is being brought, which has been made available on OLS.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
All right. We'll bring up our second panel, Brendan Pierpont, Bob Jenks, and Jennifer Hillhart.
We sure can. If you could introduce yourself for the record, please proceed.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Brendan Pierpont. I am the Director of Electricity Modeling at Energy Innovation, Anon. I'm the Director of Electricity Modeling at Energy Innovation, a nonpartisan energy and climate policy research organization, and I'm joining you remotely from Portland today. Last July, our organization published a report investigating trends in retail electricity rates for nationwide, and my comments here today draw from the findings of that research. Electricity rates are on the rise across the United States. From 2010 to 2023, the average price of retail electricity across the U.S. rose by nearly 40%. Electricity, as you all know, is a necessity for modern life, and rising rates disproportionately burden low-income customers who spend a much larger share of their income on utility bills. I want to highlight several drivers of rising electricity rates across the country from our research. So first, wildfire-related costs are a dominant driver of rising rates in California and other Western states. In California, wildfire-related costs have risen by $5.5 billion from 2018 to 2022, accounting for nearly all of the increase in revenue requirements for the state's three large investor-owned utilities. Second, natural gas is now the largest source of power generation in the U.S., and gas markets are exposed to geopolitical uncertainty, such as Russia's invasion of Ukraine and the resulting energy crisis in Europe. And in 2021, U.S. natural gas prices quadrupled in a matter of months. Those natural gas costs flow through to retail gas and electricity customers, and this price volatility has been a major factor in rising electricity rates across much of the U.S. Third, the cost of transmission and distribution, the poles and wires that deliver electricity, has risen twice as fast as inflation nationwide since 2010, and that represents a growing share of the total cost of electricity service. So much of this spending is focused on local grid needs, replacing aging infrastructure, hardening infrastructure to be more resilient to extreme weather, including heat waves, flooding, wildfire that has, have become increasingly common. And finally, investor-owned utilities are authorized to earn a rate of return on capital they invest, while expenses like fuel and purchased power are passed through to customers. And these incentives can encourage large capital investments over potentially more cost-effective options while shifting the risk of high spending and fuel volatility and other expenses to customers. So this highlights the important role of utility regulation to make sure utility spending and investment is aligned with the interests of the public. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak today. That concludes my comments, but happy to hear any questions.
Great, thank you. Yeah, we typically reserve questions till the panel is done, so if you could just wait in line for a few minutes, we'd appreciate it, and we'll proceed with the rest of the panel.
Good afternoon, Chair Sosa, Vice Chair Chaichi, and Vice Chair Osborne. My name's Bob Jenks with the Citizens Utility Board of Oregon.
Good afternoon, Rep. Sosa, Vice Chair Chaichi, Vice Chair Osborne. Thank you for being here today and hearing about our bill. My name is Jennifer Hillheart. I am the Policy and Program Director at Oregon Citizens Utility Board.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Oregon Cub is an independent nonprofit that advocates for residential utility customers. We work to keep bills affordable, accessible, reliable, and clean. Today, our hearing, we're focused on affordability. The current regulatory structure is dominated by utility requests for higher rates, and it's not, not affordability for customers. For-profit utilities make money by making big infrastructure investments upon which they receive a rate of return. That's where they earn their profits. This worked well in the early 20th century when we were trying to build out the electric network so everyone had light and heat, but a system that incentivizes spending, that has led to a utility-centered regulatory system that focuses on cost recovery associated with that spending. Today, there are separate cost-recovery mechanisms for fossil fuel prices, renewable investments, energy efficiency, wildfire mitigation, storm recovery, transportation electrification, community solar, coal retirement, environmental cleanup, and other issues. So there's a whole slew of various mechanisms utilities have to get costs into rates. Oregon's for-profit utilities started reporting disconnections to the PUC in 2018. Last year, they disconnected 64,000 households in 10 months, and that translates into roughly 150,000 Oregonians losing their power. Customers can be disconnected for as little as a past-due bill of $50 right now. One of the reasons for these, these, these disconnections is the big rate hikes that we've seen in recent years. Those combined with cold weather in the winter are really what is leading to a lot of the disconnections. This graph shows the rate increases that customers have seen with the three largest utilities since 2021. We've lost the focus on establishing rates that are fair and reasonable to the customer, that, that affordability is not really considered in the rate-setting process when you've got all these various rate, rate mechanisms. We need utilities to change their practices to better center the customer in their request for rate increases, and we need to ensure that the regulators have the tools to mitigate those rate increases and ensure affordability. These increases that we've seen recently have resulted in residential customers paying hundreds of dollars more than they did in, in five years ago. Under legislation you passed in 2021, we have developed programs to assist community members struggling to pay their bills, but this isn't enough on its own. Even with these programs, which began to come online in, in spring and fall of 2022, we saw staggering disconnection numbers. The benefits of our rate discount programs have essentially been offset by all the rate increases, and I hate to even think about what the disconnection numbers would be without those Now I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer to talk about the details of House Bill 3179.
Thank you. And I do want to say thank you to Chair Sosa and Rep. Chosen, Rep. Neuron, and Rep. Gomberg for being sponsors of this bill, and thank you, I don't know if Senator Solman's still in here, but for coming in today to talk about it. The Fair Energy Act is centering, is going to help center the customer more in ratemaking. Cub has not worked on this bill alone. We've worked with our community partners at Verde, the Oregon Just Transition Alliance, and the Community Energy Project on this bill, and you'll hear from, hear from them in a little bit. This bill, I just want to clarify a few things from the get-go. This bill only applies to residential customers, so residential customer rate increases for the investor-owned or, you know, other, also called for-profit utilities in Oregon. So the big, big ones. What it will do is make explicit the ways the PUC can set energy billing rates at the lowest possible level, so families can better avoid big bill increases, big bill increases in their, in their bills. Moves rate increases out of winter, when energy uses is the highest, and provides for the use of low-cost financing for certain large projects that utilities need to invest in. It'll increase transparency so regulators and customers know what exactly rate increases are going towards, as far as cost categories go, and also what they can expect for changes in their bills. I will walk through what the bill does in my presentation, but also walk through what the dash one amendment adds, since I know, just got posted yesterday. I know LPRO is working hard and really appreciate all their hard work in getting it to us before the Oops, wrong way. Okay, so first and foremost, this bill will help create more affordable bills. Oregon law includes factors that the PUC must consider for utility investor needs, and HB 3179 will give equal weight to residential customer needs by requiring the utilities to analyze and the PUC to consider the economic impact of a rate increase on residential customers. And this is one component that we've changed in the dash one amendment, where previously it said the PUC needs to consider, but we added language that says the utilities need to explicitly make this analysis of economic impact. And rather than tie the economic impact analysis to percentage revenue change for the utility, we changed the bill to direct the economic analysis to continue to consider past rate increases on customer, but also utility, past 24 months of utility profits in their decision-making. It explicitly provides utilities can also use low-interest financing for utility infrastructure beyond emergency situations, and this will help lower costs for bills for, like, big cost items that are necessary to meet our future energy needs. The bill also provides that any new residential general rate increases for all customers, and this gets to your question earlier, Representative Osborne, that there's a prohibition on any residential rate increase for 18 months since the last rate effective date of a residential rate increase. This does not mean the utility can't get a rate increase from the large customers, like, you know, data center customers, you know, any of the other customers in its service territory, but it does add a little bit more of a cushion for residential customers. The dash one amendment includes language prohibiting any residential rate increases in the winter months, so that'd be November 1st to March 31st. These are when the energy bills are highest for our residential customers, and we saw the impact of that with record disconnections this last spring. It also gives the PUC more time to issue decisions in ratemaking. Right now, the PUC has roughly about 10 months of backup. The utilities determine, determine when they come in for a rate increase. They get to come in whenever they want. That's, that's how, basically, the law provides. But what this will do, currently, the PUC has to make a decision on a rate, a general rate case within 10 months of the application. What this bill does is adds a little bit more time, another three months for the PUC to consider. And this is, I'll give an example of why, you know, one of the ways this is important. Last year, we had our two biggest electric utilities come in for rate increases within two weeks of each other, and that made for a really difficult process for PUC and, and, you know, interveners like Cub to feel like we can really give a robust analysis of the rate case request. So this would give the PUC a little more wiggle room to maybe stagger their decision, you know, based upon what the utilities are, are asking And then transparency, this is a big piece that we're really looking forward to from this bill. It creates more transparency about what the, what the rate increases are going to. It's been difficult even for Cub to have an understanding of what exactly the percentage of rate increase will be. Some utilities, we have these big general rate increases, which you saw Nolan Mosier talk about, the rate increase percentages from these big general rate increases, but there are also smaller surcharges you, like, might see on your bill that are essentially what we call single-issue ratemaking, which be, which may be lawful under the law, or there may be reasons why, you know, of emergency, for example, why those are not considered in the general rate case. But what this does, we kind of, so it makes it hard to understand what will be the total rate increase for utility in one year. So with this transparency, we'll have a better understanding of what the rate increases are going to be with regular reporting, but also what it's going to. Yeah, so that's it. I'll kick it back to Bob.
House Bill 3179 creates a process that better balances the interest of residential customers and utility shareholders. The utilities will still retain their legal right to a reasonable opportunity to recover their costs and return on investment, and House Bill 3179 does not direct any cost shifting to other customers. It evens the scale by explicitly making affordability part of the process and then giving regulators additional tools to ensure affordability and to mitigate rate increases. In theory, utility ratemaking has always been about determining fair, just, and reasonable rates. For residential customers, the concept of fair, just, and reasonable rate has to include a strong focus on affordability. Without this, rates are not fair, they're not just, and it's not reasonable to have utility bills be so high that customers can't afford them and instead are disconnected. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in favor of House Bill 3179, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Rep. Rushki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Jenks, good to see you again. With you and Senator Solman, I think I'm back in 2017 in the Energy and Environment Committee, so good to see you. You mentioned in your testimony affordable, accessible, reliable, and clean.
Yes.
Those four are great when they all line up, but what happens when they don't line up? When affordability and clean are at odds with one another? Or investing in reliable reliability means less accessibility because we can't expand the grid the way we want? What's your organization's stance? What is the priority on, on that kind of conflict?
Thank you, Chair Sosa, Vice Chairs Osborne and Chaichi, Representative Rushki. I think, for me, it's really a matter of, you have different, you're trying to create a balance in, in that kind of circumstances. Obviously, we've got to maintain affordability, we've got to keep rates affordable, but an affordable rate doesn't do any good if it's not reliable. If you turn on the lights and the lights don't come on, if your power's out, if everything in your refrigerator goes bad. So there's got to be a balance between those factors. We know with climate change, we've got to be cleaning up and moving towards the, into, we know the electric system, energy systems we're going to need in the future, and we've got to align our investments. If, if an investment is going to be recovered over the next 50, 60 years, we ought to be looking to the future and make sure that investment lines up with where the economy is going, where we're going to need to be. So, so it takes some, it takes some balance, it takes some judgment. That's what makes this work both interesting and difficult. But, but I don't think there's any clear-cut answer that one, one value always is maintained over everyone else. We've got to consider all of those factors.
Quick follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate that. So wouldn't this bill here limit the ability of IOUs to expand their systems in the sense that we'd be kind of capping rates and capping when they can come in and get the money they need to do those four things? Because 10 years ago, we thought that the demand curve for energy was going to be flat, or pretty flat. What we're seeing today is that's not true. It's growing rapidly. Data centers are popping up all over, and that, those suck a lot of power, but if you think those suck a lot of power, then talk about AI computing centers, which are 10 times that amount. So I'm wondering if this bill is going to hamper IOU's ability to meet those needs.
I would hope not. In fact, I would hope that to the degree that data centers are driving additional costs and additional needs, that we are putting the costs of those on the data centers and not on residential customers. So I do think, and, and there's a separate bill that talks about data centers, there's some proceedings at the PUC dealing with, with data centers, but we have real concern about the load growth of data centers, and, and part of what we need to do is to shield residential customers from, from subsidizing the, the big data centers, and, and this bill doesn't, doesn't do anything to stop the commission from assigning the costs of serving data centers to data centers.
Thank you, Chair. I, I love somewhat of the concept of what's happening with this bill, but I, but I am concerned about the future. And I guess my question is this, what if it doesn't work? What, what, what's the fallback? Do we, first off, do we have a sunset on this bill if we did pass it? Is it a four-year? We got to go back and take a look at this and say, hey, this really didn't work, and maybe we need to change something, or we just continue on? And it kind of falls in line with, with what Rep. Rushki had said. You know, we have data centers and we have major power needs that are going to come into our, and they're already, they're starting to happen. We don't have the green energy to fulfill that. And so I'm concerned about the future, because I know we have the best intentions, but right now with our federal administration, they're not looking at those same intentions as where we are. So I don't want to get the cart in front of the horse and not be able to reverse it back. So would there be, would you be open to an amendment that says there's a sunset on this bill, or, or at least an amendment that says we're going to go back and look at the results in two years and see if it made sense?
Chair Sosa, Vice Chair Chaichi, Representative Osborne, appreciate that question, because we are trying something new here, trying to address this, this issue. I think, yeah, we're open to any amendments that we think folks would, would be necessary to have a good bill. I mean, we're hoping with this bill, I mean, there is providing for, there will be a PUC investigation, so I think some of those conversations could happen there and through a rulemaking, but, you know, I think, you know, we're having ongoing conversations with PUC and, you know, the utilities as well about this bill, so I don't think the dash one amendment is a be-all, end-all, so open to thinking about that.
Can, can I just add one, one point to that? We, we, we understand that concern tremendously. It's, it's easy to have unintended consequences of something we thought long and hard about, can we put in rate caps? I mean, there's, there's people who are disappointed that we don't have stronger language in here that simply prohibits utilities from raising rates, more raising rates over certain amounts and things like this. And, and the problem becomes, we don't know what emergencies are going to arise. We, we don't want to put something into statute that is going to become a barrier for dealing with the, the future. So what we're really trying to do is, is create, provide some tools for the commission. We're not directing them when to use those tools, and we're trying to create some information and trying to change the process so that the affordability of bills is, is, is considered. It takes nine months to run a rate case, or 10 months to run a rate case now, so the, the 18 months before rate cases extends that a little bit. It means we don't have every, rate increases, big general rate increases every year. We will continue to have the smaller, single-issue ratemaking and other things, so I, I, I think the limits on, on the utility in here are, are, are not that. So I think the limits on the utility in here are not that great. They're not, we tried to be smart and not do this in a way that creates long-term barriers. But at the same time, I do think it's important to create some new tools, some new process that can be utilized by the commission and should be utilized, the commission, under normal circumstances, to keep rates affordable.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question, hopefully. I don't know, excuse me, Mr. Jenks, Ms. Sohar, or if Mr. Pierpont would be the best person to answer it. But we've seen that the rate increases from the investor-owned utilities have been significant over the past number of years. Can you compare that to what we've seen with municipally-owned utilities or co-ops? I don't know who can be best positioned to answer that.
Chair Sosa, I think, or Mr. Pierpont might be able to respond to that, but also, I mean, Bob, if you want.
If he can't, I can.
Yeah, Mr. Pierpont, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide a national view of that, and Mr. Jenks, if you want to jump in after that. From my perspective, looking at rates nationally, I do think we have seen the recent inflation in electricity rates be greater for investor-owned utilities than for municipal utilities and co-ops nationally. I think part of the reason for that is specific to what is going on in California with wildfire costs and the specific liabilities and spending associated with wildfire costs following on IOUs. There's a different treatment of wildfire costs in California for municipal utilities. But in general, the lower cost of financing, the better alignment between customer or member or payer interests and ratemaking principles for unions and co-ops have resulted in a lower rate of increases.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, and within sort of this, just the Pacific Northwest region, most of the publicly-owned utilities are served primarily from Bonneville, from Federal Hydro Power, and that has a much stable, much more stable cost than having to go out and sort of build new power supply and things. And then the second thing is, the most of the public, the way the Bonneville system works is, you can't put new large load into the preference rates, you can't share essentially the hydro benefits of the Columbia River with new large load. So it means when data centers are going into publicly-owned territory, they're not, they aren't pushing costs onto residential customers, they're having to go out and secure power supply in addition to what's already going on for residential customers. So you do see data centers going into publicly-owned territory, but you don't see those data centers causing general rates to go up for all the ratepayers of those communities. So I think those two differences make a significant difference, so.
Thank you. All right, well, I know we have a lot of folks signed up to testify, so thank you very much, appreciate your time, appreciate the robust discussion. And now, our next panel up is going to be Zach Kravitz, Alan Specter, and Natasha Jackson. If you could please come forward. And while we're waiting for them to come up, Rep. Reski, I do want to clarify something for the record. My staff reminded me that there is actually a dash two, making some technical verbiage changes to the bill here and there, so that will certainly be available.
Thank you.
But I wanted to clarify that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Whoever would like to go first, if you could just introduce yourself for the record.
I'm happy to. Good afternoon. Zach Kravitz, Vice President of Rates and Regulatory Affairs for Northwest Natural. Thank you for having me here today. At Northwest Natural, our focus is always providing safe, reliable, affordable energy. And we are incredibly proud of the fact that our average residential customer is paying less today than they did 20 years ago. We're also very proud of the success of our bill discount program for income-eligible customers. This program provides discounts from 15% up to 85% off of customers' bills. Now, we recognize that Oregonians have felt the effects of inflation across many sectors in the economy, and we know that these higher costs are challenging for our customers. And the last thing that a utility wants to do is raise rates. But as a public utility, we cannot compromise on safety and reliability of our system, and we cannot avoid necessary investments in our system. Because we serve 2 million people in Oregon, and we serve them on the coldest winter days, and we must be able to serve them on those days. Otherwise, we have a public health and safety emergency. Now, I do want to talk about rate cases for a minute, because when we file rate cases, we file thousands of pages of testimony and exhibits justifying our costs, and typically respond to over 1,000 information requests from the parties involved in our cases. And I'm very proud to say, also for Northwest Natural, in the last 10 years, in each of our rate cases that we have filed at the Public Utility Commission, we have been able to work collaboratively with our stakeholders and come to joint resolution on our rates. And so we have had settlement agreements with the commission staff, with Cub, with other stakeholders, where we have come together after a long, arduous process, and we can all say together, we are setting just and reasonable rates. Now, as for House Bill 3179, I do want to point out what Northwest Natural does believe are unintended consequences that may result because of this bill, that will ultimately harm customers and the public utility. So first, this proposal will create massive uncertainty for public utilities. Historically, utilities have been required to demonstrate the prudency of their investments, but this adds a new layer of regulation on top of that. And when we make investments, usually these large investments, we're planning out multiple years in advance. And so there's no way for us to know at the time that we commit to that project that six years from now, the economy may be in trouble. And that is a major issue for us, and that puts a huge amount of uncertainty on utilities in terms of our planning. And so what does that look like as we move forward into a rate case? Well, all of a sudden, we've committed to this project, it's completed, it is benefiting customers, but something outside of our control has happened in the economy. And now, all of a sudden, because of this bill, we may no longer be able to recover those costs. So what happens to those costs? They don't go away. I mean, they're still there, we will have to recover them at some point. And meanwhile, as I mentioned earlier, we're a public utility, we can't go on autopilot. We need to continue to drive this and make sure that the system is safe. So not only do we have these costs that we'll need to recover, but we're also investing in the system, and so these costs are accumulating. And if we don't have an opportunity to timely come in for a rate case and recover those costs, then we've got a big snowball behind us, and our rate impact is way bigger than it has to be because of this bill. Finally, I think it's really important that we recognize that customers and the company, we depend on our debt and equity investors to finance the system improvements. And these investors, they are making a choice to deploy their limited capital into the state of Oregon's economy. They don't have to. So what this bill does is makes less certainty around the timely recovery of their investments, and also sets the standard of only an investor getting the lowest reasonable return. And so that puts an investor in a position to say, I'll look at this bill, and maybe I'll choose to invest in 49 other states and not the state of Oregon. And that is a very bad day for Oregon utility customers. And at the minimum, it would, that investor would say, well, there's a risk premium investing here, and your costs of financing are going to go up, and so those costs to customers will rise as well. I understand that this is a well-intentioned bill, and we want to work with you and with Cub on this bill and other stakeholders, but right now, there are some serious problems that we have identified, unintended consequences that must be addressed, and we will work with you, but I want to identify these problems. I will supplement this testimony with detailed written testimony. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Chair Sosa, members of the Commerce and Consumer Protection Committee. For the record, my name is Alan Specter. I'm with Cascade Natural Gas, that serves 75,000 rural customers across central and eastern Oregon, and whose annual filing, our last rate filing through our PGA resulted in an 18% decrease reduction for our ratepayers. That was in November of 2024. On behalf of Cascade, I'm testifying in opposition to 3179. Although well-intentioned, 3179 inadvertently harms the critical program, services, and protections supported through our rates. The requirement that utilities must wait 18 months after a rate case to further increase rates fails to consider costs outside of a utility's control, such as new regulations like the Climate Protection Plan, or Program, and increasing gas prices. The provision would threaten investments in the continued safety and reliability of critical infrastructure and places us at risk of absorbing regulatory lag well beyond current levels. Additionally, provisions that would have the commission determine when rates go into effect would disrupt the collection of fair, just, and reasonable rates and our opportunity to earn our authorized rate of return. Without the opportunity to earn the authorized rate of return, like my colleague from Northwest Natural was saying, utilities become less attractive for investors, it increases debt costs, which in turn increases bills for customers. The new reporting requirements under 3179 are either beyond the purview of investor-owned utilities to collect or redundant. Cascade already informs customers of what they're paying for by category through our existing rate filings. Unemployment rates and median income would be available to us through the same public data sources accessible to any other party. And data that's available to Cascade can currently be requested through our rate case data collection process. While we cannot support HB 3179, Cascade is open to working with the proponents of this bill on some aspects, including the prohibition on winter rate increases. We'd like to work with you on that. The concept of securitization, publishing expected rate changes on our website, expanding time to consider major increases. However, Cascade respectfully requests the committee oppose this bill as currently written. Given the importance of the issue, we hope that you'll take the time to work with the utilities to get this right. Cascade has programs in place to reduce the burden of bill impacts to low-income customers and non-low-income customers, such as our bill assistance program. And we remain committed to providing safe, reliable, affordable energy to the communities we serve. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Please.
Chair Sosa, Vice Chairs Chai Chi and Osborne. For the record, I am Natasha Jackson. I am the State Affairs Director for the Northwest Gas Association. We're the trade association that represents the three natural gas utilities in Oregon who serve 2 million Oregon residents, as well as 85,000 businesses, institutions, and industries. We're testifying in opposition to House Bill 3179, both the base bill and the dash one amendment that was posted. Natural gas utilities are well-positioned to understand the sensitivities their customers face, including affordability, which has been a major topic of conversation, driven by the frequent and sizable electric rate increases over the last few years. Natural gas utilities have not raised their rates as frequently nor as sizably as the electric IOUs. Therefore, we respectfully ask that we not be included in this legislation that would make it harder for our utilities to invest in their infrastructure, deliver reliable energy to Oregon's hospitals and schools, and operate and decarbonize our systems. I must say, we are surprised to be testifying before you today on a piece of legislation drafted by Oregon's residential customer advocate that will inadvertently harm customers by raising their rates, not lower them. The bill requires utilities to carry more debt for longer periods of time, which will result in debt costs to customers and higher utility bills, contradictory to Cub's mission to look out for the welfare of residential customers. We are also, we also believe that the legislature needs to have a much bigger conversation about the policy drivers that are driving the increased rates, that some of which are not even felt by customers yet, like the Climate Protection Program. Our utilities deeply care about their customers and their customers' ability to balance paying for energy that runs through their daily lives and putting food on the table. This is why we have robust programs that help both low-income and non-low-income customers with bill assistance. We also have other tools to smooth over rate increases, including natural gas storage that allows us to buy a lot of natural gas when it's the cheapest and deliver it when it's needed the most, including during peak winter months like the one that we had last January and February. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. I've not seen any questions. Well, thank you all, appreciate your testimony. All right, our next panel up is going to be Greer Klapaki, Anahi Segovia Rodriguez, and Soledad Molina. And, excuse me, because we are running a little short on time, we are going to ask folks to please limit their remarks to two minutes if they can. If you run over a little bit, that's okay, but if those folks could please come forward, we'd be happy to hear from you. We're going to try to get through as many people as we can today.
Talk slowly. I'm going to try to.
If you could just identify yourself for the record.
Would you like us to introduce ourselves first and then go?
As you speak, if you could just introduce yourself without time, that'd be great.
Sounds good, thank you. Dear Chair Sosa, Vice Chair Chai Chi, Vice Chair Osborne, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Greer Klapaki, and I am the Policy and Advocacy Manager with the Community Energy Project. The Community Energy Project serves clients on the front lines of climate change, including low-income seniors and folks with disabilities. CEP offers free environmental and energy education, weatherization supplies, direct home repairs, energy upgrades, full energy retrofits, and maintenance services, all at no cost to our customers. CEP supports House Bill 3179, the Fair Energy Act, because access to clean and affordable energy is a human right, and we know that far too many Oregonians from all constituencies are struggling to pay their energy bills. From 2021 until now, Oregon's largest-for-profit utilities have raised their rates by 50% or more, and one utility actually reported record profits in 2024. This has left far too many families in dire financial situations, or forced these families to live without heat and cooling altogether, which can and often does have devastating consequences. As mentioned, we serve some of Oregon's most vulnerable residents. In fact, 29% of our clients are 55 or older, and 32% of our households we serve have someone with a disability living in them. In certain instances, our clients are living on a fixed income or in manufactured homes like mobile homes. These clients will be especially vulnerable to having to make difficult choices of what bills to pay or being unable to afford their energy bills entirely. Even more concerning, it's not uncommon for us to hear clients complain of high utility bills. We've actually heard clients say their bills go to $900 or more per month. The Fair Energy Act empowers state regulators at the PUC or the Public Utility Commission to set energy billing rates at the lowest possible level so that families can better avoid big increases in their energy bills. It also moves, as people have mentioned, any rate increases out of winter when energy use is at its highest. Lastly, the bill will increase transparency so that customers know what their money pays for and what to expect. I urge you to support House Bill 3179 so we can continue to build strong and resilient Oregon communities, especially in places where it matters most. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. Chair Sosa, Vice Chair Chai Chi, Vice Chair Osborne, and members of the committee. My name is Anahi Segovia Rodriguez. I am the Energy Justice Coroner at Verde, and at Verde, we believe that environment is at the heart of all issues, livability, security, wealth, and while we are located in the Cooley neighborhood in North Portland, our advocacy reaches the entire state. Over the last two years, I have intervened in multiple rate cases where we have successfully advocated for lowering proposed bill increases. However, not everyone can participate in these processes, as most cases require legal representation, for example, an attorney or an expert witness, which we know can cost a lot of money. Through workshops and community outreach to educate our community members about the ongoing dockets in the Public Utility Commission, we work to bridge the gap between the complex regulatory decisions and the real-life struggles of ratepayers. At these workshops, we have heard firsthand from individuals who are forced to choose between buying food and paying their energy bills. That's why House Bill 3179 is so important. This bill will allow the Public Utility Commission to consider the full economic impact of rate increases on households, ensuring that decisions reflect the realities that people are living through. It will increase transparency, requiring utilities to provide clear information about cost categories and residential customer rates and expected rates adjustments. Additionally, House Bill 3179 will help shift increases away from winter months, giving families a much-needed relief through the time of year when energy bills are at their highest. Today, you will hear similar testimonies from community members and partners who also see these struggles firsthand. We need to ensure that the energy remains affordable and that our policies reflect the needs of people who are most impacted by these decisions. By supporting House Bill 3179, we can help protect Oregon families from disproportionate energy burdens and promote a more equitable energy system. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros del comité. Me llamo Soledad Molina y vivo en el distrito de Representantes 50. Me llamo Soledad Molina y vivo en el distrito de Representantes 50. Estoy aquí hoy para decirles que apoyen la ley de energía fair. Vivo en Portland y soy cliente de PGE por 24 años. A lo largo de estos años, los biles eran accesibles, pero en el transcurso del tiempo han subido mucho y nos han afectado en lo económico y en lo emocional.
Good afternoon, Committee members. My name is Soledad Molina, and I live in House District 50. I am here today to ask you to support the Fair Energy Act. I live in Portland and have been a PGE customer for 24 years. Throughout those years, the rates were affordable, but over time, they have gone up a lot, and it has affected us financially and emotionally.
Antes, mis biles eran menos de $100. Ahora llegan de 200 hasta 300 al mes. No me alcanza el dinero para pagar todos los biles y comida, que siguen subiendo. Actualmente participo en el programa de descuento de PGE, pero ya con los aumentos prácticamente es como si no me ayudaran. Entiendo que quieran aumentar sus tarifas, considerando que es un negocio. Hasta cierto punto sí estoy de acuerdo, para que puedan proveer los servicios. Lo que no hay razón es cuando aumentan las tarifas año por año, sin pensar en cómo va a afectar al pueblo.
Before, my bills were less than $100. Now they go from 200 to 300 a month. I don't have enough money to pay for all the bills and food, and they keep going up. I currently participate in the PGE Discount Program, but with the increases, it's almost as if I'm not getting any help. I understand that they want to increase their rates, considering it is their business. To a certain extent, I agree with it, so they can provide the services. But what is not reasonable is when they increase their rates year after year, not thinking about how it's going to affect the people.
Yo apoyo la HB 3179 porque asegura que las tarifas no suban más de una vez por año y medio. Ahorita, como está la cosa, es bien difícil hacer el presupuesto cada mes, y tengo miedo que me desconecten la luz. Las facturas han subido demasiado, y hemos optado por disminuir el uso del calentón en temporada de invierno.
I support HB 3179 because it ensures that rates do not go up more than once a year and a half. Right now, the way things are going, it's very difficult to budget every month, and I'm afraid they will disconnect my electricity. The bills have gone up too much, and we have decided to reduce the use of the heater during the winter season.
En el calor, mi familia disminuye el aire acondicionado, pero esto hace que se dañe más rápido la comida. Mi apartamento es solo electricidad, entonces cuando cae nieve, hay tormentas o se va la luz, es muy peligroso para mi familia. Uno no puede salir y no puede alimentar a mis hijos. Por no dejar que las tarifas peguen durante los meses de invierno, me dará oportunidad para presupuestar y prepararme para el aumento cuando lleguen los meses fríos. Cuando las tarifas suben en enero y se usa más energía, crea más estrés porque uno no sabe qué esperar.
In the heat, my family turns down the air conditioning, but this causes food to spoil faster. My apartment is solely electric, so when the snow falls, there are storms or the power goes out. It is very dangerous for my family. We can't go out, and I can't feed my children. By not letting the rates go up during the winter months, it will give me the leverage to budget and prepare for the increase when the cold months hit. When the rates go up in January and more energy is used, it creates more stress because you don't know what to expect.
Podría darles ejemplos de los problemas que hay, pero no terminaría ahorita.
I could give you examples of the problems that there are, but I wouldn't be able to finish right now.
La gente de Oregon necesita los beneficios de esta ley. Por eso yo apoyo y le pido a ustedes, miembros del comité, que por favor pasen la HB 3179 y sus enmiendas. Gracias por su tiempo y su consideración.
The people of Oregon need the benefits of this bill, so I support and ask you, members of the Committee, to please pass HB 3179 and its amendments. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Just a quick comment.
Quick comment?
Yeah, and actually, okay, so, thank you for your testimony. It's not so much a question, more of a comment and a word of caution to the Committee. The gentleman with the beard at the end, you made in your statement, you said that access to clean electricity or clean energy, I wrote it down, was a basic human right. It is not a basic human right. We cannot force electric companies to come here and do business. We cannot force gas companies to come here and do business. It'd be great if we could, but we can't do that. I just want a word of caution, set a marker, as some of the reps would say. Let's not force our utility companies into insolvency because we don't have a backup plan.
Rep Osborne, appreciate the comment, and thank you all very much for testifying. We really appreciate you sharing your perspective. Okay, next panel is going to be Kristin Sheeran and Matthew McVie. If you could please come forward, we'd be happy to hear from you. Again, we're going to try to get through at least half a dozen or so more speakers before we run out of time, so if you could please keep your remarks to around two minutes, that would be great.
Good afternoon, Chair Sosa, Vice Chairs Chai Chi and Osborne, members of the Committee. My name is Kristin Sheeran, Vice President of Policy and Resource Planning at PGE. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on House Bill 3179 on behalf of Portland General Electric. While we have concerns with some of the details of the bill as it currently sits, PGE signed up as neutral today to indicate our commitment to working with legislators and stakeholders to advance customer energy affordability this session, and we have submitted detailed comments on the record. Our customers count on us every day for the energy they need. Excuse me. We know that rising costs across the economy, including utility rates, have been exceptionally difficult for some of our customers. We're focused on keeping the cost of electricity as low as possible as we work to modernize and strengthen the grid, meet society's rapidly growing demand for electricity, advance the energy transition to cleaner resources, protect the grid against increasing cybersecurity and other threats, and prepare and protect against unpredictable and extreme weather and wildfire. PGE has and remains committed to working with all stakeholders to address these complex challenges and to serve customers well. Customer price increases on PGE's system over the last five years have been primarily driven by the rising cost to purchase the necessary power from the open energy market to serve our customers. Power costs, which PGE has limited options to control and are necessary to maintain reliable service for customers, have nearly tripled over the last five years. Over the same time period, we have continued to focus on operating as efficiently as possible, and we've managed our operating costs to remain at 7% below inflation. PGE is committed to working with customers who need help with their bill and offers a wide range of programs and resources to customers. For example, our Income Qualified Bill Discount Program provides discounts of up to 60% based on household income and size. More than 91,000 residential customers are currently enrolled. PGE also offers flexible payment options and works closely with customers to help them access payment assistance, including payment plans based on customer circumstances. We know that affordability is top of mind for our customers and for legislators as cost pressures are impacting Oregonians across all sectors. We share the goal of House Bill 3179 to lower costs for customers, increase transparency and certainty for customers, but we believe the bill as currently introduced and the -1 amendment posted yesterday could result in unintended consequences that could slow our transition to cleaner energy and hamper needed investments to provide safe, reliable power and grow Oregon's economy. For example, the proposed use of securitization, a complex financing tool, in sweeping and untested ways as currently proposed, could result in higher costs or challenges in raising capital. Securitization...
We should have you wrap up, please.
Sure. We believe securitization could be appropriate to lessen the impacts of significant on-time events, and we're interested in expanding its application for appropriate uses. We appreciate the conversation in the Committee today, and we look forward to rolling up our sleeves and working with all of you and the stakeholders to address these concerns and arrive at legislative solutions to support energy affordability this session. Thank you.
Please.
Chair Sosa, Vice Chair Chai Chi, and Vice Chair Osborne, and other members of the Committee. For the record, I am Matthew McVie. I'm Vice President of Regulatory Policy and Operations for Pacific Power, and I appreciate the opportunity and look forward to engaging with Citizens Utility Board and other proponents of this bill to address the impacts of the utility rates on customers while ensuring continued reliable service at the lowest possible cost. We are listening and hear the concerns and challenges that the price increases have created for Oregon families. Pacific Core is always willing to seek new ways to reduce the impacts on customer bills while delivering safe and reliable service. In that context, we believe that any legislation must be drafted to avoid unintended consequences, and we will continue to advocate that any legislation, one, limit customer information to public sources and include strict protections on customer data if used; two, include assurances that financial tools are fair for all parties and facilitates the investment critical for achieving state energy policy goals; and three, promotes efficiency and transparency. We must be cognizant that as we are relying on more data, economic data, we always have to be aware that the utility is not in a place to collect that data, and we should not be collecting that data on behalf of our customers and then providing it to other entities. Further, any party requesting access to customer-specific data should be subject to specific requirements. Second, the legislation must balance customer interests with the utility's ability to invest and serve customers when establishing fair and reasonable rates. Legislation should also maintain the Commission's independent role to assess and balance those longstanding interests. In this industry, the provision of safe and reliable service requires substantial capital investment over a long period of time. We are particularly concerned with the proposal to allow the Public Utility Commission to order securitization of large investments. As an example, Pacific Core's recent Gateway South Transmission Project, which is a 400-mile, 500-kilovolt transmission line, was in development for over a decade, meaning a decade of investment to build much-needed infrastructure. That transmission line, which went into service at the end of '24, is enabling 1,400 megawatts of new emission-free generation and substantially reducing net power costs for our customers. Securitization would impose an after-the-fact analysis outside the utility's control, eliminating the opportunity for shareholders to earn a return on their investment. This would result in significant chilling effect on access to capital and future investment in infrastructure. Finally, additional regulation should promote efficiency and prevent unneeded expense associated with compliance and prevent reliance on outdated information in decision-making. While it's true that rates have increased significantly over the past couple of years, it's important to address the specific drivers. Those have been addressed by other members of the public testifying, and so with that, I'll end. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your testimony. All right, our last three speakers for today is going to be Rohelia Martinez... Your time or not? No. Sorry, Rep Chotson. I just want to get these last few folks here. They did travel a long way. Rohelia Martinez, Sylvia Tanner, and Zoe Serrano. If you could please come forward, we'd be happy to hear from you, and that will be it in terms of our speakers today. So if you could, please come forward. All right, if you could keep your remarks to two minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair Sosa, Vice Chair Chai Chi, and Vice Chair Osborne. My name, for the record, is Zoe Serrano. I'm the Legislative Coordinator with Rogue Climate. Far too many people in Oregon are struggling to pay their energy bills. Households in rural communities are especially more likely to be energy burdened, with 30% to 39% of households in Jackson and Coos County facing severe energy burdens while also earning less than $15,000, $60 per year. As increasingly prevalent extreme weather events further burden our community members in southern Oregon and the south coast, Rogue Climate hears firsthand from families we serve through our community heat pump deployment program in Jackson County, many with young children, who face the difficult choice between using expensive plug-in heaters to warm at night or enduring cold homes to save on rising utility bills. This is why the Fair Energy Act, HB 3179, is essential, to ensure that everyone has access to safe and affordable heating and cooling as the impacts of climate change continue to burden community members. Utilities should be focused on providing essential services to meet community needs rather than using ratepayer funds to block policies that protect residents from pollution and climate impacts. Over the past month, the gas industry front group with ties to Avista has been spreading misinformation in an attempt to block climate policy led by Rogue Climate's youth action team in Ashland. At the same time, Avista is requesting another rate increase at the PUC. This is not what customers are paying for. It is essential that we increase transparency, ensuring customers understand what they are paying for and what to expect from future changes in energy bills. HB 3179 allows utilities greater flexibility to use low-class financing for necessary investments in the energy grid, keeping customer costs low. As we approach critical emission reduction deadlines, the cost of a just transition will only rise, making it imperative that we act now. Rogue Climate strongly supports HB 3179 as a necessary step towards creating a fairer, more resilient energy system for all Oregonians. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair... Oh, sorry. Chair Sosa, Vice Chair Chai Chi, and Osborne. My name is Sylvia Tanner, and I'm a Senior Energy Policy and Legal Analyst for the Molloma County Office of Sustainability. I'm here today to express our support for House Bill 3179. Molloma County has insight on several ways in which bills impact our community. Molloma County works to protect the health of our community, and from that vantage point, we can see that energy is essential to people's well-being and survival. We can also see the health impacts of disconnections or of people keeping their homes at unsafe temperatures to save money. As you heard, this is a strategy done by people in our community. You heard that from Mrs. Soledad earlier. As summers get hotter and as we see an increase in the frequency and severity of heat and winter events, rising rates pose ever greater risk to folks struggling to afford their bills. Our Energy Assistance Team sees many low-income people in our community dealing with large bills and with the risk of disconnection. Our office, the Office of Sustainability, sees higher energy burden despite of our collective work in policies to decrease energy burden, policies and programs like what you heard earlier from Mr. Kravitz and Mrs. Sheeran, the bill discount programs. Indeed, the latest numbers from the Department of Energy indicate that 27% of residents of Molloma County experience energy burden. That is an increase of 3% from 2020 numbers. We need House Bill 3179 with the -1 amendment to address structural issues in rate-making, like the fact that rates can go up in the coldest months of the year. And we needed to give the Public Utility Commission and stakeholders more tools to bring our community's reality closer to the center of the rate-making process. Our community needs these changes, so please vote yes on House Bill 3179. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros del comité. Me llamo Rogelia Martinez Pérez y vivo en el distrito de Representantes 44. Estoy aquí hoy para pedirles que apoyen la ley de energía fair. Soy madre soltera con cuatro hijos menores que lleva luchando cada día para salir adelante. Los aumentos de tarifas con Pacific Power año por año me ha dejado debilitada.
Good afternoon, Committee members. My name is Rogelia Martinez Pérez, and I live in House District 44. I am here today to ask you to support the Fair Energy Act. I'm a single mother with four minor children who has been struggling every day to get by. The rate increases with Pacific Power year after year have left me weakened.
Yo apoyo HB 3179 porque me daría estabilidad económica. No tener un aumento de tarifa a menos de un año y medio del último aumento. Con el aumento de comida y renta y todo lo demás en mi vida, asegurando que los servicios no puedan subir mis facturas cada año, ayudaría a mi familia y las familias de muchas personas por todo Oregon.
I support HB 3179 because it would give me financial stability to not have a rate increase less than one and a half years from the last one. With the increased prices in food and rent and everything else in my life, assured that the utility companies won't be able to raise my bills every year, will help my family and the families of many people all over Oregon.
En los meses de invierno es cuando se usa más la energía. Yo que trabajo tanto para proteger y sacar a mi familia adelante, y los servicios me cobran más por subir las tarifas. Cuando ellos saben que la comunidad necesita usar más energía para calentar el hogar, necesitamos que pase esta ley porque no es justo que los servicios aumenten las tarifas en estos meses fríos.
In the winter months is when you use the most energy. You work so hard to protect and provide for your family, and the utility companies charge us more by raising the bills when they know that the community needs to use more energy to heat their home. We need this bill to pass because it is not fair for utility companies to raise rates in these cold months.
Este 2024, cuando se fue la luz por tres días y estaba preocupada porque teníamos frío y también se nos había echado perder nuestra comida, era momentos traumáticos para mi familia. Me estresaba solo de pensar cómo iba a pagar mis facturas porque no podía trabajar en esos días. Encima de todo eso, todavía preocuparme si me iba a salir más alto la factura por querer calentar mi apartamento.
This 2024, when the power went out for three days, I was worried because we were cold and we also lost our food. It was a traumatic time for my family. I was stressed just thinking about how I was going to pay my bills because I couldn't work those days, and on top of all that, I was worried... work those days, and on top of all that, I was worried that my bill was going to be higher because I wanted to heat my apartment.
Aunque la comunidad ofrecen ayuda para las familias, muchas veces hay barreras para poder calificar. Cuando se me perdió la comida, la organización verde me dijo que habían recursos que podrían ayudar a recuperar los costos. Desafortunadamente, duraba mucho tiempo y no pude agarrar la ayuda. Por eso es importante pasar HB 3179 y sus enmiendas. Las comunidades de Oregon necesitan ayuda y urge que ustedes, legisladores, por favor apoyen y pasen esta ley. Gracias por su atención y por su tiempo.
Although in the community they offer assistance to families, there are often barriers to qualify. When my food went missing, the organization Verde told me about a resource that could help recover the cost of food that went bad. Unfortunately, it took too long and I couldn't get the help. That's why it's important to pass HB 3179 and its amendments. The people of Oregon need help, and it is urgent that you please support and pass this bill. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you all being here. So colleagues, I'm going to close the public hearing on House Bill 3179. The committee will schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, February 25th, for the purpose of hearing the remaining 10 people who signed up today that we did not get to. For those folks we didn't get to today, I am very sorry. We do have limited time, but look forward to hearing from you next week if you're available to come back on Tuesday. If not, would appreciate you submitting written testimony. We'll be sure to take a look at that.
They don't have to sign up again.
You do not have to sign up again. So thank you very much, and colleagues, we are adjourned.